So I click the switch and the alarm starts.
Oh, you didn't tell you what this was.
No!
Ladies and gentlemen, a call to order, the meeting of the Planning Commission Regular Session Meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Franze?
Here.
Commissioner McGurran?
Here.
Commissioner Belzer?
Here.
Commissioner Hoyt?
Here.
Commissioner Block?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Absent.
Commissioner Carlberg?
Here.
Commissioner Fishman?
Here.
And Chairman Coleman?
Here. We have a quorum. Second item, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay. Commissioner Block?
I move for approval of the agenda.
Director.
Second, Commissioner Carlberg, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Against, nay. Agenda is approved. Eight-zero. Did I get that right? Yeah. Up next, approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes from the May 1st, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Are there any amendments or changes to the minutes? You have a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Block?
Mister Chair, I move for approval of the minutes from the, uh, May 1st Planning Commission Meeting.
Second.
Second, Commissioner McGurran, all in favor approving the minutes for May 1st, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
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 Against, nay. Commission meeting minutes are approved, eight-zero. Up next, two items on the consent agenda, case 4624, Villas Leewood HOA perimeter fence, and case 4724, 103rd Street and State Line Road Wells Fargo wall sign. Would any commissioners like to pull these cases for further discussion? With that, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner, uh, Belzer?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Block, all in favor approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Against, nay. Consent agenda is approved, eight-zero. Brings us to new business, case 5224, 104th Street and State Line Road. Moley Automotive Group requests for approval of a special use permit for off-site and off-street parking located south of 104th Street and west of State Line Road. And I believe Ms. Ewing, you have that one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Cameron Ewing, Planner One, this is case number 52-24, Moley Automotive Group, Off-Site and Off-Street Parking. Request for approval of renewal of a special use permit for off-site and off-street parking south of 104th and west of State Line Road. The applicant is Ben Bigum with Pulsonelli, and the applicant is requesting approval of renewal of a special use permit to allow for the continued use of an existing parking lot for off-site and off-street parking of new vehicles from Moley Automotive Group located in Kansas City, Missouri. The previous SUP was issued in 2021 with a three-year, three-year term, excuse me. Since that approval, there have been no proposed changes to the site. Staff is recommending a special use permit with a term of five years with the stipulations in the report. On-site, there are a total of 56 parking spaces with a 12-foot drive aisle being proposed. There are eight existing street trees located on west 104th Street. There is an existing 28-inch tall decorative black painted steel fence located along 104th Street. The applicant has been made aware that at least one picket is missing from this fence and needs to be repaired. There is no lighting or landscaping proposed with the project. This case does require a public hearing and also an interact meeting, which was held on May 9th, 2024. There were no attendees at this meeting. However, a summary of that is included in your packet. We did receive one public comment letter, uh, that is also in your packet as well. Since this project is requesting approval of a special use permit, the golden factors must be analyzed with respect to the project. All eight golden factors have been met and addressed. And then you will notice on the dais, there is a memo regarding stipulations for this case. So staff did visit the site on April 29th and noted the current state of the parking lot. There was quite a bit of cracking and erosion, um, the pickets, some pickets were missing. So the stipulations on this one have been amended a little bit after discussions with the applicant. Stipulation number three has been changed from "the special use permit shall be issued" to "Moley Automotive of Kansas City, Inc." That has been changed to "Moley Properties LLC." Stipulation number five, this is regarding the restriping and resurfacing of the parking lot. Within 30 days after governing body approval, the applicant slash owner shall resurface and restripe the subject parking lot to match the approved final plan. That has been amended to 90 days instead. After discussions with the applicant, their Water District Number One has been doing utility work on-site. So due to their schedule, the 90 days would give a little bit more flexibility to the applicant. Um, and then, so with that, staff recommends approval with the amended stipulations in front of you. And I will be able to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Ewing. Any questions for staff? Mister Block?
Uh, Cameron, I, I remember this case, I believe, from 2021, and I, and I think initially maybe, Mark, this might be a bit better question for you, but I, I thought that maybe it wa- it, it was previously a one-year, uh, renewed every year. I think they asked for longer. I think we gave them three. Now we're moving to five. Just the, the, is there any more backstory to that as to?
Um, what, last year, we actually recommended two as far as staff, and then I think the Planning Commission wanted to give them a little bit more time. Uh, they indicated that they really wanted 10 on this one, so we were trying to find kind of a, a middle ground there. But, thank you.
You're correct. Any other questions for staff? I have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Ewing. The report says the site's been used for car storage since 1999.
Mm-hmm.
Has it all been for, with the same dealer?
Excuse me?
Has it been with the same dealership since 1999?
Yes, the owner of the property is Moley Properties LLC, and they have been the sole owner during that time period.
Okay. And then, I, I did go on the way here tonight, on the way, uh, from my office, I did go down the street to look at it. Uh, you're correct. I mean, it's, it's got grass growing in, it's, um, it definitely needs to be resurfaced. I assume there were, I couldn't find any lines on there. Uh, I assume that when the project first, they started using it, there were lines at it at one point?
With the previous final plan that was approved, there were, um, stripes that were indicated on the final plan. To my understanding, it was striped, but they have faded over time.
Okay, and, and Water District Number One does have part of it ripped up right now. I mean, there's a big hole and...
Mm-hmm, they, they will be doing work on the western side of this lot, so.
And there also is a tree that got demolished in half in the way, so, okay. All right, very good. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward. Welcome to the Planning Commission. Please state your name and business address for us.
Name, name is Ben Bigum, uh, Pulsonelli Law Firm on behalf of the applicant. Address is 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, we're not asking for anything different than what's been happening the last 25 years on the site. We appreciate staff working with us, you know, Water One, that was kind of some news to us as we got into, um, you know, going through this process, the SUP renewal. We're in contact with Water One, they've, you know, given us a timeline of their projected completion, and we'll be working as quickly as possible with applicant to get, uh, the resurface and restripe as requested.
Any questions for the applicant? Uh, I did note that you guys initially pushed back over the restriping of the parking lot and everything. Are you okay with that now?
Correct. We, we had a slight miscommunication, misunderstanding from our perspective. Our client does a lot of business in Missouri, and the, you know, the requirements are a little different. They had a, you know, we had a slightly different understanding of what, um, requirements there'd be with restriping. We're totally in agreement with staff after a discussion with them today, and we really appreciate them taking the call and listening to us and explaining everything to us.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll note this case does require a public hearing. Uh, with that, I will open up the public hearing, invite the public to come forward. Anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition will be given an opportunity to speak. Would anyone like to speak on, uh, case 5224?
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Block?
Saying none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Belzer, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
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 Against, nay. Public hearing is closed, eight-zero. Brings us up to discussion. Any discussion on, um, this case by the Planning Commission? Commissioner Fishburg, Fishman?
This is one area, Mister Chairman, that, in, in Leewood, that, where the buildings are older, and, um, frankly, I think the area is, um, a little junky looking. It, uh, it's cluttered, and I think that, uh, if anywhere in Leewood there is a area that's a candidate for redevelopment, it would be this area. My concern is that giving a five-year special use permit to a parking lot essentially puts any chance that this area could be redeveloped within that five-year period on hold. And it makes me uncomfortable to, uh, just put a, a hold on that area in case a redevelopment opportunity would arise. And so I would be in favor of either a stipulation that the special use permit could be withdrawn uh, on notice from the city, some, maybe 180 days' notice, uh, or if that's not legally permissible, then a shorter period of time. I know that, uh, the governing body is probably tired of seeing this come back all the time, uh, but I think that it's a small price to pay for maintaining flexibility.
Thank you, Commissioner Fishman. Anyone else say, discussion, Commissioner Belzer?
Yeah, I, it's really a question for staff. Did anybody, um, respond to the Geralt's email? Or was there any conversation with them about their concerns about how it looks so close to the Leewood Estates subdivision based on their email? Was there any response to that?
I believe Debbie reached out to this, um, public comment and tried to clarify and answer any questions that they had.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Hoyt?
Um, just to go back to Mister Fishman's point, that is the logic behind only giving the one-year special use permits. And when this came up three years ago, I mean, it really is a revolving door of this case being brought back to us, and so it seemed reasonable that three years would give the applicant, um, you know, some sort of planning horizon and understanding of what the situation was with their off-site parking, but that it didn't tie the property up excessively. And, you know, it seems to me that the three years might be good to stick with. Um, I'm, I don't know how long it takes to mount a major redevelopment, but I'm guessing it takes more than a year. So if we only had a three-year special use permit on this, I wouldn't think it'd be a huge disincentive to the redevelopment of the area. Um, but maybe five years is too much. Anyway, that's something to consider.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Commissioner Block? Uh, I, I, I appreciate those both comments, uh, from both commissioners, but I guess I just don't know, maybe I just don't understand how it would work. First of all, I mean, it's, it's, it's in a floodplain. You know, the city's already moving the parks facility out of there. You know, it's on the, and I think that was, you know, uh, addressed in the application that it was, or in our packet, I should say, that, um, you know, it's in a regular shape of a property. Um, you know, there's a street that, that bifurcates the rest of the area. So I guess I just don't know logistically how that would work. I mean, would it be eminent domain? I mean, wouldn't the property owner want to sell it? I mean, it's not like they have to stay in it for five years. If someone were redeveloping on the other side of the street. So I guess that's just where I just go. I'm, I'm not disagreeing, you know, necessarily, but I guess I don't know what it would hurt, just, you know, I guess I just look at it from, you know, this is an expense that kind of, an attorney here having to go through this process, you know, it, I, I think that's why they wanted to not, you know, to, to go from the two years to the three, from the three to the five or 10 or whatever it is. So I just, I, I, I guess I'm kind of stuck in the middle there, just, just in understanding, you know, kind of what it would look like and how, you know, they wouldn't have to go to the end of the five-year term, uh, which wouldn't delay the redevelopment, I wouldn't think, but, but maybe I just don't understand. So I don't know who can answer that.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Uh, Ms. Cricks?
Mister Chair, if I could just kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Block was saying. Also, special use permits are actually issued to the operator. So if, you know, if you, you choose to recommend the five-year term and say there is redevelopment opportunity and a good offer was made back to the property owner, they can choose to sell their property, and at that point, the s- the special use permit is null. So there is also that consideration. It's, it's specifically to this user, to this specific use. So, you know, if they wanted to change hands to another operator, they would have to come in for the special use permit and come before this board and to the governing body as well. So that's just also just something else to kind of think about as you're working through in your conversation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cricks.
May I?
Commissioner Fishman?
Yeah, I appreciate, uh, that comment, but the counterpoint of that would be that, uh, it would be unlikely that, uh, the owner would be interested in selling uh, if they were continuing to use the property for, uh, for parking that they need. Uh, if they didn't have a special use permit, they may be much more likely to sell in the event that a redevelopment opportunity were to, um, were to arise. And, and to address Commissioner Block's statement, frankly, I haven't given any thought as to how that property might redevelop. Uh, and I know it would be very, very difficult. You've got, uh, the floodplain there, and you've got a number of different ownerships, and I know that, uh, if, that eminent domain is highly, highly unlikely. However, properties do redevelop when there is a substantial, uh, vacancy and somebody wants to sell. Uh, the momentum could gather, and there could be an he- an opportunity. So, uh, I, I'm still uncomfortable with five years. Uh, I think three sounds like a, uh, a better idea, and if we have to readdress this in three years, then we just do. It, it's not that much trouble.
Um, any other discussion? I, I will say, I've, I've been on the commission for a number of years. We, it was one year, and I remember so distinctly the last time they came in three years ago, uh, the owner or the attorney at the time did discuss they wanted a longer term for the SUP because they do have to do some due diligence on their end to get to this point. They weren't looking to sell it, they just wanted to keep the cars there. So that's why, how we got from one to two to, to the current three.
Yes.
So I understand the five, uh, it's just kind of a, um, an inertia at this point. And again, that area is, it's a floodplain. I, I don't see that particular piece being redeveloped. I can see the other side of 130, of 103rd Street, the north side of it. But that's outside where this property is located. It's right on the edge of Indian Creek. So I, I can't see how that little parcel would, would be developed, but that's, that's just me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't see you up there. Would you like to say something?
No, no problem at all. I was just going to say to Commissioner Block's point, we just ask that consideration be taken into account of the resurfacing and the restriping being done here. Um, you know, it's a requirement of the city, we're happy to do it. Um, the longer term, you know, it is an expense to the applicant. Uh, we haven't gotten exact numbers back yet, but it will be a significant expense, and the five years gives, you know, it's a lot better for the applicant in terms of making sure that the investment they're making into the site. And like everybody's kind of been bouncing around too, uh, it is a very challenging site. It is a very challenging site, and it is located in a floodplain, so there are some difficulties with developing the site, and that's largely a reason it's ended up as a, you know, an off-site storage facility for the, the overflow of cars at the dealership down the street. So, again, thanks for everybody's time, and, um, really appreciate, um, all of your efforts on this.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion by the commission? Anyone that would like to put forth a motion?
I would, Mister Chairman. Uh, I would, um, move to amend the, uh, the, uh, the agenda item to, um, approve the special use permit for a period of three years rather than five.
And you're putting forth a motion?
Putting forth a moment.
Is this just an amendment to the motion?
An amendment to the motion for approval, amendment to the proposal.
Okay, so you're motioning for the entire case as well? With that, with that?
Yes, yeah, I, that, that's fine.
Okay, just want, just want to be clear. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, um...
McGurran.
Commissioner McGurran. Need name tags.
I'm here for you.
Thank you. I'm glad to feel my pain.
Well, I'll put ours this way.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving case 5224 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, uh, the case is approved, eight-zero as amended. Thank you, sir, for coming down. Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to case 5924, A, B, and C, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-7, Table of Uses, Section 16-4-3 dot 7, Special Uses Designated, Section 16-9, Definitions, Request for Approval of an Amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to Cat Cafes. Ms. Cricks, is this yours?
Yes, sir.
All right, go right ahead.
Thank you, Michelle Cricks, uh, Leewood Planning Department. Uh, this is case 5924, A, B, and C, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendments to Section 16-2-7, which is the Table of Uses, 16-4-3.7, Special Uses Designated, and Section 16-9, Definitions, which proposes to create and define a new use of cat cafes within the city of Leewood. In March and in May, uh, the Planning Commission held work sessions to discuss a new use within the city of Leewood, cat cafes, which is currently not in allowed use under the Leewood Development Ordinance. A cat cafe is a theme dual-purpose retail establishment where a portion of the space is dedicated to the preparation and indoor sales of food, beverages, and other retail goods, but also offers patrons the opportunity to interact with cats for adoption, um, within a separate space. The area housing the cats, or also could be called a cat lounge, would be sectioned off from the sales and general consumption of food and beverages. However, patrons may take food or beverages into the cat lounge as permitted by the cafe owner. This type of establishment would allow cafe owners to partner with local adoption agencies and organizations, uh, to increase the adoptability of cats. Typically, patrons would pay a fee to enter the cat area where the fee would be applied to the care of, uh, the cats. Uh, cat cafes are licensed by the State of Kansas Department of Agriculture under the Kansas Pet Animal Act. Cat cafes are frequently inspected by the state, and they must meet general housing requirements, general sanitation and pest control requirements, and so on, to retain their license. In addition, they are inspected by the State of Kansas Department of Agriculture's Division of Food Safety and Lodging for the cafe portion of, and sales. So therefore, under Section 16-2-7, the Table of Uses, staff recommends that cat cafes would be allowed in the Planned Neighborhood Commercial Retail District, or the SDNCR, and the Plan General Retail District, the SDCR, with an approved special use permit. Since cat cafes, um, would be permitted in the SDNCR and the SDCR districts, they would also be allowed in the Mixed Use District with a special use permit as allowed by ordinance. Under six, under Section 16-4-3.7, the Special Uses Designated Section, a new subsection, subsection I, would be created to, for the allowance of cat cafes with an approved special use permit, subject to some specific requirements, such as they must comply with the Kansas Pet Animal Act and all other applicable state agencies. They must provide a permanent barrier between the cafe where the drink and food are prepared and served and the cat lounge, uh, provide a double-door system for security, restrict the maximum number of cats housed within the cat lounge to 12. No outside ingress into the cat lounge would be permitted, and the cat cafe must maintain safe and hygienic conditions. And last but not least, staff is proposing a definition of a cat cafe within Article 9. And staff is recommending the, uh, definition. Now, I did put a, a, um, a memo on the dais just adding a slight change to the definition that I, that was proposed that went out in the packet, just to make sure that's a little bit more flexible than what was originally proposed. So therefore, staff is recommending the definition to read, quote, "A commercial establishment combining food and beverage service with the opportunity for patrons to interact with cats provided by a licensed animal shelter or rescue." So staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the proposed Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment as, um, presented and amended in, as, uh, for the definition. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cricks. Any questions for staff?
Question?
Commissioner Hoyt?
Um, just out of curiosity, I was thinking more about this, this week, and I know it says that it will meet the sanitation and so forth requirements. And this may be in the micro-management area that you wouldn't know the answer to, but I'm just curious what kind of, like, health statements or warnings or in the way of signage there might be. And what I was really thinking about is, you know, you're serving food or drinks, and granted, people don't have to come to this establishment, and they do bear a certain level of risk, I guess, that they would understand. But I'm just thinking about toxoplasmosis in pregnant women, which is, you know, a very bad combination. And just like when you go into a restaurant and there's a warning about, you know, this food may be undercooked or whatever, you know, is there similar signage that goes into something like this?
Request, signage that would be required by the state? I am not aware because it kind of gets all lumped into a general regulation under the Kansas Pet Animal Act where cat cafes aren't specifically defined. I don't know if there are any general requirements for any warning signage or to that effect.
Okay, just to kind of follow up. I mean, it seems to me that part of our responsibility is to think about the health and safety that maybe goes, of the wealth, of the population that goes beyond what are mere requirements. So again, I don't know that we want to put into this stipulations about adequate signage, you know, must warn the public of potential health risks. Maybe that sounds too alarmist, but it does worry me a little bit.
All right, Mark, did you have something?
I, I think something that we could definitely amend as far as to put something like that in. We are, to a certain extent, we do have to rely as far as on the state agencies who are doing the regulations because there might be so many numerous ones that we'd miss one. So that's part of the reason why we have it in there. I know that, I believe we have a, somebody here who works in that, that area and they may be able to answer some of those questions during the public hearing.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Commissioner McGurn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have a quick health and safety question. Is there a requirement for any kind of special ventilation or airflow in the cat lounge that is already covered through the Kansas Pet Act or the Kansas Department of Health and Environment or any of the sub-agencies that are going to regulate some of this? Is that, is that already something that is needed, number one, and already covered as far as how it would be done? Or do we have to do that?
I would think that probably the state would be, have regulations as far as what would make it a safe business. They, there are a number of these within the area. I don't really know the answer to that. We would have to, to check. And if that was the case, then we would have to, we'd probably request continuance of the application so we could check as far as more individual questions to that regard.
I'm not sure it's a concern, but at the same time, having thought about this a little more, I, I thought about the, you know, are you going to be pulling the air out of the cat lounge and recirculating it with fresh air? Is that, is that needed or not? I, I don't know. Seems like something that might be. I, and I get if we had dogs in there, it'd be an obvious given, I think, that it would be required. But I, I don't know about 12 cats.
Unfortunately, I, I don't have the answer to that right now. So again, if that was something that you want us to look into, we could certainly do that. However, we need to continue the case so we could actually reach out to the state and, and ask specific questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? With that, this case does require a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either in favor or in opposition will be given an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward to the lectern. Please give us your name and your address.
My name is Kelly Dethrow. My address is 15050 West 138th Street, number 4665, Aletha, Kansas 66063.
Okay, welcome. You have four minutes.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
I am, good evening, commission. I am members of the commission. I am very grateful for your consideration. My name is Kelly Dethrow and I am the future owner of Perfect Match Cat Cafe. I'm a certified pet first aid and CPR instructor as well as a certified professional pet sitter. I am also recently a new board member to Meowing Matchmakers Cat Rescue. I've been a small business owner in this community for over eight years. My team of employees and I have provided in-home pet sitting services to over 400 active clients, including residents here in Leewood. We average about 6,000 in-home visits per year. Just for Babies is regarded by the public and members of the professional pet community as one of the top pet services in our area. I envisioned the pet city business to become cat-focused within the first five years because the resources for cat owners are significantly less than for dog owners. We achieved our objective and we are the only cat-centric company in Johnson County. My passion is to educate pet parents in understanding and bonding with their pets. The community has welcomed Just for Babies with open arms and we have been fortunate enough to give back through partnerships with Meowing Matchmakers. The passion, dedication, and combination of 200-plus years of rescue experience with their board members truly shows how well they find perfect homes for the cats. When my business transitioned to cat-only services, the logical next step was to open a cat cafe. I want cat owners to have the best of the best. My formula is my knowledge of a cat-focused business, a first-class cat rescue, and a community of dedicated cat owners and possible new owners. Leewood is my first choice of a location. The people of the city are so dedicated to their families, causes, and they are so open-hearted and top-notch. Perfect Match is going to be the hub for the community, something different for Johnson County. The citizens of Leewood can embrace and show pride in our new business. There will be many firsts that will put Leewood's Cat Cafe on the map. A new national program will be an additional, excuse me, new national programs will be additional tourist revenue to the city as well as making it a destination spot for cat lovers. We're not here just to offer cuddles with cats, but make a meaningful difference in the lives of many cats as we can. While also contributing to the prosperity of our community, we hope that you continue to be a part of our story. And to address the two concerns that were just brought up regarding health and sanitation and the ventilation that you were asking, yes, they will be on two separate systems. Whether it be that the location is two separate retail spaces that we lease to have their own systems, or if we have one space and when we split the space, it'll have its own air intake. We'll also have air filters in the cat lounge as well. To address the toxic plasmosis, I apologize if I pronounce that incorrectly. And I understand that's litter box exposure. Litter boxes will actually be contained and they will be...
Please continue.
Okay, they will be contained and they will also be, we'll have three different times that we will be going in and scooping the litter boxes to make sure everything is, there's nothing left inside. There will also be a time where we're going to have cat napping, where we will go in and do a sanitary clean midday. There will be a sanitary clean in the morning as well as at closing. And again, we will follow all protocols from the KDA as well as the FROSTER program for Meowing Matchmakers Cat Rescue. Thank you again for your consideration. If you have any other comments or concerns, I'll be more than happy to address those for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Commissioner Block.
Saying none, I move for close, closing of the public hearing.
Second Commissioner Carleberg. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Public hearing is closed eight to zero. That brings us to discussion by the planning commission. Anyone like to make any comments, Commissioner?
McGurn.
McGurn.
I would just like to say thank you for wanting to put your business in Leewood. We appreciate it.
Any other comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block.
I move for approval of case 5924. Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-7, Table of Uses, Section 16-4-3.7, Special Uses Designated, Section 6-19 Definitions. 16-9, pardon me.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carleberg. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving case 5924C as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes eight to zero. For, for your information, this will now go to the city council and then they will have the final vote on it there. But thank you for coming down. We appreciate it and your insight. Just brings us up to, we have a work session on Tuesday, June 11th. You know, regular meeting is Tuesday, June 25th. Mark told the city council, no, you can't have this room. And they backed down.
Put his foot.
Put his foot down.
Nicely done.
Does anyone have anything else to bring up? Okay, we're adjourned until June 11th. Thank you all.